Good evening, welcome to this June 20th, 2023 meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to this law.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, where we are, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Roll call, please.
Grant Christ.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Austin.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Alright, that takes us to item thirty-seven under Special Presentations on the Council Agenda, an overview of the State of Nebraska requirements for the Affordable Housing Action Plan, and that will be brought to us by Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you, this is just something that I wanted to kind of get started with the council and the public a little bit by just kind of generally saying what it is and why we need to do it by the end of this year. The Affordable Housing Plan must be adopted by the city no later than January first, 2024, by state statute, and this is just a general presentation regarding basic requirements and regulations per that state statute. So, I'll just start with that, and as to what is the Affordable Housing Plan and kind of what the state says about it. And so, this plan is essentially in response to many cities, counties, communities having a lack of affordable housing in general, and that the housing plan should hopefully assist those areas to kind of get to think as to why do we have that lack, what could we possibly do to help that, and just kind of an action plan to maybe help move that forward. And so, this is from the legislature, and so, this is kind of their reasoning behind it, that they found that there's a need for affordable housing in all city sizes, and that it actually contributes to economic growth, and that it really is beneficial to making the municipal, city, county resources and services that much better and more cost-effective. And also, there's part of it to examine and update particularly zoning codes, ordinances, other things that goes into the building of housing, and that it actually helps by doing the affordable housing and putting a greater variety of affordable housing in place with that increased density, that it promotes the effect of land use and the efficient land use. I'll just start with the state statute that actually says this is what we need to do and when we do it, like I said, we have to have it adopted prior to January first, 2024, for any population with under fifty thousand inhabitants, which would be us. And then, there's four basic items that they want to see in the action plan, but there can be other things also, but the basic number one is the goals for the construction of a new affordable housing, and what kind of types, numbers, general locations, that we as a, as a city see those going. The number two goal is the percentage of areas in the city zoned to actually allow that multifamily or middle housing, what they call it. Number three is our plans to help encourage incentivize this affordable housing. We have some various things available to us as the city to, to hopefully help incentivize that. And then, four is to actually do the zoning code ordinance, regulations, updates to promote and incentivize that affordable housing. If we do not actually get this done before the end of the year, then the state statute says the city shall be required to allow the development of certain things, and that is number one, middle housing in all areas that allow for the development of single-family detached, and a duplex on each lot or parcel that allows the development of single-family detached. And so, if the city fails to do this, then we have to allow those, and we shall amend any codes to make that allowance acceptable to anyone trying to be built. And just so that people understand too, when we talk about middle housing, these are definitions out of that state statute, so middle housing is duplexes, triplexes, quads, cottage clusters, or townhomes. And townhomes actually is anything for two or more attached, and it doesn't have a limit on the higher end, so it doesn't say two to six, two to ten, it just says two or more. And if we're not familiar with cottage clusters, it may be something that we would want to think about, putting that option in our code, we don't actually have anything like that right now, but it's really smaller kind of detached housing units that are in a cluster essentially around kind of a shared open space courtyard type setting. So, this actually has it as a footprint of less than nine hundred square feet, so it's not a huge house, but it's a decent sized house still if you go up to that nine hundred. And it's something smaller that can potentially be affordable, obviously, for people without a lot of extra maintenance on the outside, you're going to be on a smaller lot, shared open space, shared courtyard. I just wanted to, to put that out there since you'll probably be seeing that come out if we try to do an open house or two before that, just to kind of get the public, we've had this brought up in a couple of subcommittees just to, to get it started, since we knew this was coming up towards the end of the year. But if there's any questions, I just wanted to get that out there so it wasn't a surprise to anyone if they started seeing this.
Thank you, Val. Any questions from the council on where we're at in the process of this planning, or about the plan itself to this point?
Val, will we be able to adopt, change our code, or do we need to adopt new code to have this involved in it?
Like our zoning code?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we don't have to start completely from scratch, we can amend what we have now to, to put what the city wants to see. I mean, it, it's not a completely start over, it's, it's adding something to what we already have, maybe changing things a, a little bit, allowing some smaller units, smaller lot sizes potentially, so the land cost gets a little bit less, that sort of thing.
Alright, thanks.
And Val?
Go ahead.
The nice thing about the plan that you have in front of us too is this is our plan, not one that the state will force upon us if we don't have it completed, correct?
Correct, yeah, I mean, the city's going to want to take a look at this, and, and that's why I think the, the state said the city should put this together, you know, because each city is, is different, so it's up to the, each individual city what works for them. But I will let you know that it's hopefully not going to be something that sits on the shelf either, because also in this section of state law, the cities have to turn in a report every odd numbered year to the, the state urban affairs committee to say, how are we doing, what did we do, you know, to, to kind of give that little push so that it doesn't just collect dust on a shelf, I think.
Okay, thank you, Val, I appreciate the proactive approach on this, and I suppose in addition to some other new forms that we may consider adopting like the cottage clusters, which I think is a great idea, we can cite in this plan some things that we've already done, like the approval of tiny home zoning districts and loosening up some R1 standards to allow for things like accessory dwelling units and mother-in-law flats and lofts above garages, things like that.
Correct, yeah, and I actually just turned in our, our state required report, and I brought that up in the report, that we've, we're already starting this, we're working on the actual action plan, but we've already started kind of doing some of those things in preparation for it, yes.
Yeah, all with the intent of, you know, helping make development and construction easier and more accessible, especially in the market of what we're seeing is, is, is popular and in demand because of affordability, smaller units, higher density settings and all of that, so a lot of this is getting rid of regulatory barriers that don't allow for some of this to happen right now, which, which I think where we always want to be. Alright, any other questions or discussions on this? Alright, that moves us to item thirty-eight, and a public input session to discuss the potential upgrades and expansion of the sanitary sewer system east of the flood control. And to lead this discussion, we'll hear from Andy Colvin, our city administrator, and/or Steve Vramis, and/or Chad Roberts.
I'll introduce Chad, so, thanks Mayor. Well, yeah, we'd like to present council and community with a discussion on the Omaha Lift Station project, the projects that came up following the 2010 flood event, and interior studies that were done.
I'm sorry, we'd like to present council and the public tonight a conversation on the Omaha Lift Station project, this is a project that came about following the 2010 floods and some infiltration, that impact had a significant impact on us down at the water plant and some impact on some, some residences upstream of, of one of our lift stations. So, Chad Roberts is, manages our water treatment facility as well as our water distribution system and wastewater collection system in the community, and so I've asked Chad to present, present a little bit of background and, and discussion on, on potentially moving that project forward if that's desired.
Chad Roberts, Water Service Director for City Norfolk, good evening Mayor, council. As Steve said, we were requested to come in tonight and do a little discussion, a little public input on the conditions that we have on the east side of the flood control as far as the sewer. On our subcommittee meeting we had, we gave some solutions, some ideas, we gave a little update of what we've been doing in the past, I've got a little four, four-page slideshow here. Some of the things that we've done in the past, we had a study done in 2015 with Kirk and Michael, during this study, there was three different phases that was set forth from this study. Phase one was done, was completed in 2016, and that one there, we upgraded the motors at the current lift station along with the pump capacity of that station. The second phase was to upgrade the motors again to a higher output, horsepower output motors, increase the pumping capacities to sixteen, sixteen hundred, or sixteen, one thousand five hundred, one thousand six hundred and fifty gallons a minute, and then also with that study on this phase, we would have to do a dedicated force main and also increase the storage capacity of the station. One thing to keep in mind, the two, the current two seventy-five lift station does share a force main with the East Park Lift Station, which is just west of this station on the other side of the flood control. And then, phase three was to build a completely new lift station, and this station would include a new sewer interceptor that would travel down to the new sewer, the location of the lift station, and a new force main. After a discussion at the subcommittee on Monday, June twelfth, it was decided to go ahead and proceed with the idea of moving this lift station into our current budget year, looking at next year as a possible development for the station. Some, some, some advantage of this station, on page two, you'll see there where I got the purple line, that is that force main, that would be not shared no longer with East Park, so.
Chad, I'm going to, I'm going to grab you for a second here. Val, you should have this publication or this, this presentation in an email, Grant, could we bring this up so that the public could view this? It would, it would be from me.
You can just send it.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be too big.
Go, go ahead, Chad, as soon as we have that, we'll bring that up.
Alright, so, again, on the page two there, you'll see that purple line, that purple line is the, the force main that is shared with the other lift station on the west side of the flood control. With this new lift station, that force main would not be used. The red dot on there is the location of the new lift station, so you can see on there, it would take the whole east side of that flood control, would filter right to that lift station, have a separate dedicated force main, and it would basically go straight directly to the wastewater treatment plant. On page three of the slideshow, this here is a, an image of all the development that we're looking at in the sewer system of the City Norfolk. In that yellow area that's highlighted, you'll see there's four, three or four different residential areas that we're looking at for future development in the next twenty years, those areas there would be served by this east, this Omaha Lift Station. The area to the left there, the green area, that is highlighted because we've got some growth going up there in the three-one, three-two area, basically the northern part of Norfolk, that area there all comes down to the Third and Prospect Lift Station, which is over there by, just right over here by the library. By taking the two seventy-five lift station off that, that shared line, we can increase some capacity on the west side of the flood control for future development. And, and then the blue area down below is just the location of where that lift station is sitting at. So, some, some highlights of this new station that we're looking at, again, it's, it's going to have a twenty-one inch sewer line that would eventually meet up with a thirty-inch sewer, sewer line all the way down the Highway thirty-five corridor, so that will drastically increase capacity. We'd have a larger for, wet well to increase capacity, it'd be set up with four pumps in the future, but currently, right now, we'll be designing it for two, just because our demands aren't there right now for that full pumping characteristics, so it'll be built up for the future, but just set aside for right now with the, the flows that we are seeing right now. The other advantage of the station would be an onsite generator, this station will have a dedicated generator onsite, ready to go at any, any power outage, and then again, a dedicated force main. So, the cost of this, the current cost currently right now for the interceptor is two point eight million dollars, and then the station itself, we're looking at a little under two point three million dollars for the station. So, so how do we get to that cost, or how do we, how do we pay for that cost? And right now, we are looking at doing, right now, we're looking at an eight percent rate increase if this stays in next year's budget. This will be a three-year rate increase, this will be eight percent, eight percent, eight percent, and, you know, and that would take care of the, the lift station along with any improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. If we decide to wait for this a couple of years down the, like we have been, we'd be looking at a five percent rate increase for the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, which would be the grit facility and the flood, the protection wall down there at the wastewater. Just a little history on our rates, since the, since nineteen ninety-five, sewer rates have, on average, have increased about four point one percent yearly. Now, there's some years where we didn't go up, and there's some years we went up quite a bit, but over that timeframe, we averaged about a four point one percent increase. If we don't do any projects, we are looking at approximately a three and a half percent increase, just, just to meet with the, the inflation costs on the sewers, sewer items and stuff of that sort. So, on that last page here, that's kind of the, some of where the, the cost comes in, so if we go ahead and do the complete eight percent, and we model this out for three years to pay for all the improvements, the lift station, along with the wastewater treatment plant improvements, we would be at about twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents for the sewer minimum charge. And then over to the right-hand side there, as you can see, we got Kearney, Fremont, Columbus, Hastings, and South Sioux City. After three years, we would fall about right in the middle between Fremont and Columbus, so we're still on the middle to bottom side of the, the rate structure versus our sister cities. One thing to keep in mind with South Sioux City, as you see on theirs, they just had a ma, an addition, a modification of their wastewater treatment plant, in fiscal year twenty-three, they went up twenty percent on their sewer state, on their sewer rates. They're also modeling in fiscal year twenty-four a ten percent increase, so that's why you see them with a large jump.
Chad, since we don't have the visuals, can, can you in numbers kind of tell people what that means? So, South Sioux, Hastings, and Columbus?
Sure.
With projected growth versus what we, where we would be at?
Okay, so currently, our, our current cost for sewer right now is eighteen dollars and eighty cents. With a five percent increase, we're looking at nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents. An eight percent would put us at twenty dollars and thirty cents, and then if we kept that eight percent for the three years that we're projecting, we'd be at twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Where that puts us in with the other ones, Kearney's current rate right now is twelve dollars and fifty-six cents, and then after four years of their current increase, they, they would max out currently right now at thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Fremont, current rate is eighteen dollars and eighty-one cents, at a three percent annual growth for the next four years, they'll be at twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. Columbus, they're at twenty-two, thirty-six at their current rate, after four years of three percent growth, they're at twenty-four dollars and forty-three cents. And then Hastings is at twenty-three, ninety-three currently, three-year growth, after four years, they're, they're at twenty-six, fourteen. And then Sioux City, their bait, their current rate right now is thirty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, and then after their twenty percent and ten percent next couple of years, they're going to be at forty-six dollars and sixty-six cents, so. So, any questions? I know I went through that pretty quickly.
Chad, is that monthly or bimonthly?
Believe this, we did monthly, correct?
That's correct, monthly.
Good, thank you.
This project has been on the books, we do have this project ready to go, we had the plans, the spec book, all completed in 2017, so, so, and it was approved, so we are, currently, we have the consultant that looked it over in seventeen, they're kind of massaging it just a little bit currently right now, to see what we can do as far as the minimum, the, the lower flows of the station, but we would like to see, you know, we're not asking for anything today, this is just an educational item right now, but once we get into the budget season and go over the budgets, if you guys wish, our goal right now is if it gets approved, we'd like to have this thing reviewed by the end of October, possibly out to the street for bids in November, and hopefully get this thing going as soon as possible.
Chad, what would a project like this for complete, for date of completion after it's been awarded?
This project here with, with our current, I'm going to say about two years, to be honest with you, one of the biggest things that we're seeing or we're hearing is the electrical switch gears, they're anywhere between eighteen to twenty months out, so, so as soon as we get the green light, you know, we're going to get, get going on it so we can get that equipment going.
Chad, does Norfolk Crush connect to this at all?
Yes, they do.
And then all of the development on the west side of Victory Road?
Yes, yep.
And all the development on the east side of flood control down by Omaha Avenue?
Yep.
Including the new truck stop that's going in, all that connects?
That is correct.
Yeah, it sounds to me like we're too late to the game. This should have been done probably before lots of other construction was going on.
Not, not, the west side of the town would, wouldn't dump into this one, we got the, a lift station in which we would take some of the load, right now, currently, everything on the east side dumps into a, an interceptor here on Chestnut, so by taking this, this, by moving everything down south, we won't be discharging all the eastern side into that, that interceptor, which would open up capacity for the northern growth.
And you indicated this, this is already in the budget, just in future years, you just want to move it up?
Yeah, currently, currently, we had it in twenty-seven.
Which probably helps with construction costs possibly.
How, how long does that go back, Chad? You mentioned planning, starting in seventeen, maybe even before then, for this, but then a placekeeper was held, was put in the capital improvement?
Correct.
Program to twenty-seven.
Yep, yep, and, and over the past couple of years, you know, we've had it, and then we just, we were looking for industrial growth to help pay for the station, and, and since we weren't seeing that, we just kind of moved it out just a little bit at a time, and now the request has come forward to.
Yeah. Okay, any further questions or comments? Any public input? Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Jim McKenzie, I guess the one question I have is what's, what's driving the project to do it now, what's the push?
Jim, I'd, I'd just say, I think we're too late, just like I said before, if Norfolk Crush is there, we have construction going on the west side of Victory Road, down by Omaha Avenue, there's a lot of construction on where this should have went on a long time ago, and we've had people's basements flooded, and honestly, a true remedy has never been done. I think this should have been done five years ago, ten years ago, well, it wasn't, it was twenty fifteen, but you get my point, I think we're, we're too late.
Is there a capacity issue right now?
There's obviously an issue with people's basements that are flooding, Steve could probably answer that.
I thought that was resolved, I thought we had.
New development, new growth, I think the short answer is that, and planning, as we've heard, this was the planning for this, started back in twenty seventeen if not earlier, so it's community growth planning is part of your answer, Jim.
It's a, it's a solid need for our infrastructure outbuild as we continue to grow, like, like a couple councilmen mentioned, it is in our twenty-twenty-seven CIP, we've, we've been pushing that out since about twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the driver back then was partially, partially the study that was done by Kirk and Michael, that study had three improvements or three phases of improvements to it, phase one was pump upgrades at the two seventy-five lift station, that was done in twenty sixteen to accommodate the volume and growth at that time, there was a phase two implementation and then a phase three implementation, phase three being the lift station, we, we can all recall the conversations around the OTC site potentially coming in, that was a driver of getting the design done, that and any other industry that, that was interested in coming to Norfolk. Again, certainly part of our long-term growth for, for eastern Norfolk as well as, as well as the western side of Norfolk, as Chad had mentioned, I'll bring this map up here and point out, everything east of the levee, so everything east of our flood control currently runs into this lift station here, and inside the, kind of the southern end of this, the yellow highlight, from there it is, there's a force main that pumps that underneath the flood control system into another lift station on the west side. By removing, when we construct the Omaha Lift Station and then disconnect and terminate this two seventy-five lift station, it frees up all of that capacity that's currently being pushed over to the west side, and then runs down to our, to our, our sewer treatment facility, it frees up all that capacity now for continued growth up into that northwestern area, which is part of our ultimate build-out, or build-out is, you know, is, is part of our comprehensive plan, so. So it's important to continue to build out to the west as we grow. It's important as we continue to grow on the east side of the community and also just the inflation on the project. So we go back to our twenty-seventeen CIP that was listed in there somewhere north of five million, five-point-three million or so. Today, that project is projected at nine, just over nine million, nine-point-one million. So we've had, you know, a lot of growth in cost over these last six, seven years, five years. It's a, it's a needed improvement for the, for our system. And as a function of cost control, the sooner we get it in there, the sooner we control that cost, keep that from rising.
I guess I, I'm still having a hard time grasping what's driving the demand. Chad just said they were looking for industrial growth before this happened and we didn't get the industrial growth. But now all of a sudden, we want to do it. So if we don't have the industrial growth and yet we're going to spend nine-point-one million dollars, I don't, I don't understand what's driving it. And when you look at the impact on the, on the ratepayers, it's, it's a twenty-six percent increase over three years because you're compounding eight percent plus eight percent plus eight percent. So it's a twenty-six percent increase. So, and on a bimonthly basis, you know, the residential customers of Norfolk are looking at close to a fifty-dollar bimonthly sewer bill. So it's a significant cost to the ratepayers and I don't see what demand is driving. So...
Oh, there's four hundred and seventy-five million dollars in new industrial investment.
Do you, do you interrupt me?
Well, you're saying there's no industrial growth, that's just not true.
Well, Chad just said that the industrial growth didn't come to justify this.
In two thousand seventeen.
Yes.
In two thousand seventeen, but, but since then, we have had industrial growth, which is contributing to moving this for...
Facility crush facility, sixty-million-dollar expansion at Nucor.
Is there a flow study that indicates that you have the flow necessary?
I think Steve Ramis just answered that question for you.
Well, he did.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, Jim, so this, this facility was designed for a certain, a certain amount of flow that would, you know, is, and as, as we discussed in subcommittee, we would need to do some modifications to this facility, a bladder or something inside the, the tank and some smaller pumps in the short term. But it does, you know, so, so we can, we can retrofit this to make it serve the needs for the next five, ten, fifteen years. But it, you know, again, we get it in the ground, we fix the cost. And as we continue to grow on that east side as an industry comes in, we're, it's, it's much easier, quicker to make that, whatever, wherever they want to go, build-ready. It also, an important component of this, again, is it frees up capacity on the west side of the flood control system for additional growth as we continue to grow our residential community to that northwest area. And growth in, within the community as well, within that basin. So it's important for the east side and it's equally important for the west side of the community.
Jim, I just want to tell you what's driving this. So the growth is driving it, but also the citizens that are having the sewer back up in their home, it's kind of perfect timing. They're coming and asking for a remedy and we're saying, well, we're seeing this growth. So we, we feel like we're devaluing, devaluing their homes by being hooked up to our infrastructure. And we cannot guarantee that the sewer won't back up in their home. So they're asking for this and then we're saying, well, we, we are seeing the development pushed out that way also. So that's kind of where this all started.
I, I guess my question is, is this the right solution? I mean, you're talking nine-point-one million dollars. Is there a better solution to solve their homes that doesn't cost nine-point-one million dollars and doesn't make a twenty-six percent increase into all the residents' utility bills in perpetuity? Do we know that the planned lift station size is appropriate? And what is the lifespan of that equipment? If you don't have that industrial demand in the next twenty years, have you spent that money? Now you got to replace it again in twenty years and you've never really utilized it. Has, has a real look at this been done again to say, is this the right solution to this problem? I, I question that. I think we're just looking, pulling something off the shelf and say, let's spend nine-point-one million dollars, let's put a twenty-six percent increase on your utility bills and away we go.
Why do you feel that way?
Pardon?
Why do you feel like we're pulling something off the shelf?
Because this was, that's what was done back in twenty-seventeen, twenty-fifteen, whenever it was done. This is, that, that's what that study was.
So you, you feel like what we're doing today is we're pulling something off the shelf?
Yes.
Willy-nilly, just going to spend nine million?
That's, that's what it appears to be to me. Because I don't see a study, a flow study, that says we've got this much flow. I don't know if there's any, been any analysis of other options that would be less costly.
Steve, can you kind of speak to what's backing up into the basements?
Just offered a chronology of the outlines and of the studies, but we can do it again.
From, sure, from a big, from a big picture, yes. You know, we do a twenty-year sewer master plan and we update that master plan about every ten years. And so as a function of our master planning for our water system, our sewer system, we, we, we look at projected needs and capital improvements to those systems out over about a twenty-year period. And that system, Jim, I'm more than happy to print a copy of that for you. I believe there's copies on the website. More than happy to sit down and go through that and, and answer your questions specifically around, around that. But, yeah, it's not, it's certainly not willy-nilly. We don't, we don't spend tax dollars willy-nilly. We, we go through a lot of effort and we spend a lot of money to actually plan for those. Black and Beach is a, a national and international expert in water sewer systems and master planning. So we've got the best people, best people possible at the table.
I, I'm not against the project. I'm, I'm just questioning whether we've taken a deep look at it and is this the right solution? Have we really looked at other options? And I would hate to see us spend this kind of money and have a bunch of capacity that is not going to be used for the next twenty years that the citizens have to pay for.
Hey, Jim, I have a question. This, this has been going on for some time. I mean, we can say decades, right? So I don't think this is a willy-nilly project. I think this is, I agree with Mr. Grandquist that this is well overdue. You're questioning our solution. I guess I'm going to ask, what, what do you feel a reasonable solution would be? And you are looking out for, for how the tax dollars are spent. So what would your solution be or what solution would you come to the table with?
I don't have a solution. I'm not an engineer, but I, I guess I don't know that we've challenged the engineering folks to really look at, you know, what is the true capacity that we're going to expect? What are other options to address the issues that we have for flooding other than the study that was done in five or six or seven years ago, whatever it was, that said this was the, what we were looking at down the road, even four years farther down the road than today. So I don't, I don't see that there's any real analysis done as to whether this is the right solution.
Thank you.
On that note, Steve, would you say Black and Beach has reevaluated the analysis done a few years ago to consider this project?
We have not done any reanalysis since, since this project was completed and put on the shelf in twenty-seventeen. I would, I would go back to the Kirk and Michael study though and just point out again, there were three phases to that study. Phase one was completed, improvements were completed in twenty-sixteen and that was upgrading those pumps to twelve-hundred gallons per minute. Phase two would be an additional upgrade to those pumps as well as some other, other improvements over there, just to make that more, more efficient and again, provide more capacity. In terms of, in terms of some of the local issues there as a result of infiltration specifically, the, the two incidences, the incidents back in twenty-ten was an infiltration issue. We solved that by putting a restriction in the pipe up at Woodland Park that forces any, anything over, I can't remember, three-hundred-and-fifty gallons per minute, it forces it into a surge pond. And so we, as a result of that, we have not seen anything in excess of that restriction of three-hundred-and-fifty come from Woodland Park. The twenty-nineteen issue that developed, again, was an infiltration-related issue. Stormwater entered the sanitary sewer system. It inundated the pumps, exceeded that twelve-hundred gallon per minute pumping capacity, probably by a factor of two. I don't remember exactly what those numbers were. And again, as a function of that infiltration, we just couldn't get rid of the water. This, you know, it was in the system fast enough and it filled the sewer system and backed up into some local homes. Phase two certainly increases the pumping capacity of the system. It does a couple of other things in there as well, but it still has the capacity, you know, it still has the ability to be inundated. It would be not, not be a long-term fix. Again, as part of our infrastructure build-out. Phase three, the, the new lift station at East Omaha will be a very critical piece of infrastructure as we continue to grow as a community, both residential, commercial, as well as industrial growth. So to me, it makes it, it makes us more build-ready as a community, whether it's industry, residential development, commercial, commercial opportunities. We can just react faster to that. It also fixes the cost. Hopefully, when we go out for bids, we see bids come in, come in favorably. We think we've estimated that and pushed that number up for a planning perspective that, that creates that scenario for us. Again, once the eight percent, because this would be at least a two-year project, we would look at bidding it and putting the plans on the street late this, this year, opening bids right around the first of the year. As soon as we know what that is, it's very possible we could adjust future rates down. You know, maybe they're not that eight percent, maybe they're in that seven percent range. But we'll, you know, I see this project structured very well because it, again, it is a two- or three-year project, that we can look at those rate adjustments and make sure that we're doing what's, what's right for the community.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we will move forward to public hearings and related action in item thirty-nine. I will open this public hearing to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee as required by State Statute Section eighteen dash twenty-seven fifteen. And to open this public hearing, we'll hear from Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Yes, your honor. As you mentioned, state statutes require this hearing and the citizens we have serving on the Citizens Advisory Review Committee, which is required by statutes for all the L.B. Eight Forty programs, are Brandon Day, Aaron Hutton, Jan Heinspar and Kathy Means. I serve as an ex-official member of the committee. Statutes require the CARC to meet every six months and report to the city council on its findings and suggestions at a public hearing called for that purpose, and that's what we're doing here. CARC met on June thirteenth and the CARC's report is included in the agenda packet. I'll review that briefly with the council. All the CARC members were present except for Kathy Means. We reviewed the status of the Economic Development Fund and reviewed the financial statements from November twenty-two to April twenty-three. We're no longer getting regular tax payments because this program expired ten years after it was formed in twenty-ten. We do still occasionally get some late property tax payments and that and interest income was the only revenue we had during that period, relatively minor. We had no expenditures and the resulting cash balance was three-hundred-and-three-thousand one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and ten cents on April thirtieth. All this money will be dispersed probably this month. The Women's Empowering Lifeline Project, which was approved by the council on May first for a hundred-and-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, has already been dispersed. These funds are, were used to purchase a building to start a childcare center, serving up to a hundred-and-twenty-seven children. The other project, the other two-hundred-thousand dollars that remains after that is for Neighbor Works Project. The council approved this at the March sixth city council meeting. Neighbor Works was awarded a million-dollar grant from the state of Nebraska for workforce housing. And this grant, combined with our L.B. Eight Forty funds and some other funding, will establish a one-point-five-million-dollar revolving loan fund for workforce housing in Norfolk in two-mile zoning jurisdiction. That money hasn't yet been dispersed, but I think that will happen here very shortly. At that meeting earlier this month, Candace Alder gave a summary of the types of businesses that acquired about the L.B. Eight Forty program since twenty-nineteen. She also highlighted the benefits of the natural gas pipeline that was partially funded with these L.B. Eight Forty funds. The Citizens Advisory Review Committee found the city's economic development program is operating in compliance with the budget and voter-approved economic development plan. And their checklist for this meeting is included in the agenda packet. That answer any questions?
Thank you, Randy. Any questions?
I just got one for Randy. Does this committee, I guess, quit convening once the, all the funds are released? How does that, or do they have to keep going even though there's no funds in there?
That, that was a question the committee had and, and Sheila Rio's posited that question to Danny. And I think Danny's thinking that maybe we should be meeting even though there's no funds to spend out of that thing. When the forgiveness requirements, these are forgivable loans, when those requirements are met, ninety-nine percent of that loan will be forgiven, we'll get one percent of the loan back. Plus, so we'll have all over three-thousand dollars to do something with when this expires. The statutes envision that going for the next ten years, one-tenth each year to reduce property taxes, so it'd be three-hundred-and-some dollars to go to property tax reduction, which is so miniscule, nobody would ever notice that. I don't think, you know, they carry those heavy things out, a six percentage point, six decimal points. I wouldn't even impact that six decimal point. So before we have our next meeting, I may revisit this with Danny and see if we need to, what we really need to do. I mean, there was some thought that there's a lot of administrative costs to this program that city staff have. Our voter-approved plan allows for administrative charges to the program. I've never done that, but it allows for that. Maybe we could have an administrative charge for that three-thousand dollars. It's such a miniscule amount of three-hundred dollars per year. It hardly seems worth the effort to track it, but that's something we've got some time to decide and whether or not we really need to meet every six months for the next several years until this money's all gone or whether we can call it good. It seems kind of silly to meet when there's no money to spend, we have no, nothing we can do with that. So that, that was a question the CARC had and question I had too, is whether or not we really need to continue to meet. Statutes would tend to make you believe you need, you continue to meet as long as program is in existence. And I guess the program won't likely go out of existence until those loans are, are forgiven and that money's dispersed. But so questions that have been raised and Danny gave me an answer, but I didn't like that answer, so I'm not sure what we need to do with this.
I'm sure we'll figure it out.
Ten years is a long time for, I know there's, there's a few people on there that are retired. They're probably, they'd probably be happy to be done with it.
Ten years, right?
Just saying. Couple more on there my age, I'd probably be retired by the time it's done.
And just to be clear for the public, that all ties back to the L.B. Eight Forty program that was approved by voters in two thousand and ten?
Yes.
And has been discontinued. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment can do so. Okay, hearing no one, we'll close the discussion, close the hearing and move to item number forty and open this public hearing to consider a request from Deborah Brower for a waiver of required connection to the community sewage system for property located at twelve-oh-one North Twenty-Fifth Street. And to kick off the public hearing, give us some background, we'll hear from Steve Ramis. We'll do a little introduction first and then you'll be able to...
Go ahead.
I'm Deborah Brower and I own, in with my brother, the house and it's, it's, sewer isn't in need of repair, so I know I need to put a new septic in. To hook up to the city would... To hook up to the city is over six hundred feet from my property, which is well more than the four hundred fifty needed for a septic.
So, yeah, this, this particular parcel, I don't know the size, you might know the size of it right off your head, but this is a large parcel, it's directly west of Skyview, so right on the west side of Twenty-Fifth, directly west of Skyview. It's a larger lot, I'm going to guess, ten acres, fifteen acres?
Between three and five.
Okay, three and five acres. There is city sewer directly to the, there's a, again, another large commercial parcel to the north of that. In order to get sewer service to her, her line, like she said, she would have to run that service pretty close to six hundred feet in order to tie into our sewer system. Are they bringing it up online? So, this is, this is the parcel again. It's west, west and north of Skyview there a little bit. We would have sewer or on that city street right up there, that would be the closest to it. Generally, we don't, we generally, we don't allow, we do do them, but the most direct route would be to get an easement and go through that parcel. You know, that does, it would, it would reduce that distance a little bit. Typically, if the property is within three hundred feet and the structure is more than four hundred and fifty feet, then we, we specifically, you know, would, would allow a waiver. In this case, the property itself is within the two, is within three hundred feet, but again, it would be in excess of the four hundred and fifty feet, upwards of six hundred feet for them to connect. So, being the size of the parcel it is, you know, septic system would be an acceptable solution here for us.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Comments, council? Okay, thank you, Ms. Power. This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so. Hearing none, I will close the hearing and move to item forty-one. Would look for a motion to consider approval of a request from Deborah Brower for a waiver of required connection to the community sewage system for property located at twelve oh one in, in North Twenty-Fifth Street.
I'll make a consideration for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
Three acres.
Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number forty-two. I will open this public hearing to consider an amendment to the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map that the city of Norfolk, Nebraska has authorized by section sixteen dash nine oh two R R S two thousand and twelve. And to kick off the hearing, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you. The extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, I'm going to shorten that to ETJ because that's mouthful. So, this is actually the second step from when we do annexations, and this is coming from the large annexation that we did approximately a, a year, year and a half ago. We did not have accurate mapping out this far, so it, it took us a little while to get to the ETJ expansion from the annexation. With this ETJ expansion, the jurisdiction would expand from approximately the fifty-eight square miles that we have today to almost seventy-four square miles. I have Exhibit A up here, which is part of the ordinance that's attached, and this shows the colored area is Madison County and the, the different hatching on, in the black and white is Stanton County. And so, we are expanding mostly in Madison with a little bit in Stanton. And you can see too that there is a legend, and these charts down here actually come from the zoning code, so that we take the county's zoning and try to match it as closely to what the city would be. And those charts in the zoning code have actually been approved through council or ordinance, so that there isn't any guessing where you are. So, we try to, like I said, keep it as close as possible. Obviously, county has usually multiple ag districts, we have one, so if it's any sort of ag, it comes into R one ag. If it's RR, it comes in as RR, R one to R one. And so, we, we try to not disrupt as much as possible. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Val. This is customary practice as an outcome of annexation, is that correct?
Yes. When it, when we annex to the point where it actually comes out to the juris, past the current jurisdiction line, then we take those to the two-mile, because state law says we can go out to two-mile. But if that two-mile arc off of our city, city limit point does not take in the full quarter-quarter, the full forty acres, then we pull it back. So, we try not to cut people's properties in half, and that's why you actually see straight lines, they're following quarter-quarter section lines.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Val? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so. Okay, hearing none. Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three to amend the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, as authorized by section sixteen dash nine oh two R R S two thousand and twelve. Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with a six to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number forty-three. Would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-seven approving an amendment to the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map, the city of Norfolk, as authorized by section sixteen dash nine oh two R R S two thousand and twelve.
I will offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-seven approving the amendment to the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map. Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, short title, please.
There's nothing short about this one, so. An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, as authorized by N R S section sixteen dash nine oh two R R S two thousand and twelve, to include the west half of the southwest quarter of section eight, township twenty-four north, range one east, the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section seventeen, township twenty-four north, range one east, the west half of the southeast quarter of section seventeen, township twenty-four north, range north, range one east, the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section seventeen, township twenty-four north, range one east, the east half of section twenty, township twenty-four north, range one east, the east half of the northwest quarter of section twenty-nine, township twenty-four north, range one east, the east half of the southwest quarter of section twenty-nine, township twenty-four north, range one east, the west half of the northeast quarter of section twenty-nine, township twenty-four north, range one east, the west half of the southeast quarter of section twenty-nine, township twenty-four north, range one east, the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section twenty-nine, township twenty-four north, range one east, the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section thirty-two, township twenty-four north, range one east, the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section six, township twenty-four nord, twenty-three north, range one east, the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section fourteen, township twenty-three north, range one west, the northwest quarter and the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section twenty-three, township twenty-three north, range one west, the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section fifteen, township twenty-three north, range one west, olive section twenty-two, township twenty-three north, range one west, the north half of the northwest quarter and the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section twenty-seven, township twenty-three north, range one west, the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter and the southwest quarter and the southwest half of the southwest east quarter of section sixteen, township twenty-three north, range one west, olive section twenty-one, township twenty-three north, range one west, the northwest quarter and the west half of the northeast quarter and the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section twenty-eight, township twenty-three north, range one west, the northwest half, the northwest quarter, I'm sorry, of the northwest quarter and the south half of the northwest quarter, and the southwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section eight, township twenty-three north, range one west, olive section seventeen, township twenty-three north, range one west, olive section twenty, township twenty-three north, range one west, the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter and the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter and the east half of the northeast quarter of section twenty-nine, township twenty-three north, range one west. Not done. The south half of the southwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section six, township twenty-three north, range one west, the northwest quarter and the east half of the southwest quarter and the east half of section seven, township twenty-three north, range one west, the east half of the northwest quarter and the east half of the southwest quarter and the east half of section eighteen, township twenty-three north, range one west, the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter and the northeast quarter and the north half of the southeast quarter and the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section nineteen, township twenty-three north, range one west, the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter and the west half of the southwest quarter of section thirty-six, township twenty-three north, range north, one, west, the west half and the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter and the southeast quarter of section one, township twenty-three north, range one, two, west, the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter and the northeast quarter of section twelve, township twenty-three, range two, west, the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter and the south half of the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter and the southeast quarter of section township, section fourteen, township twenty-four north, range two, west, the south half of the southwest quarter and the northeast quarter of this northwest quarter and the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter and the north half of the southeast quarter and the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty-three, township twenty-four north, range two, west, the northwest quarter and the west half of the northeast quarter and the south half of section twenty-six, township twenty-four north, range two, west, the north half and the east half of south, of the southwest quarter and the southeast quarter of section thirty-five, township twenty-four north, range two, west, the north half of the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter and the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section two, township twenty-three, range two, west, the west half of the northeast quarter of section thirteen, township twenty-four north, range two, west, southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section four, township, township twenty-four, range one, west, the northwest ha, quarter of the northwest quarter and the south half of the northwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section three, township twenty-four north, range one, west, the north half of the northeast quarter of section two, township twenty-four north, range one, west, the northwest half of the northwest quarter of section one, township twenty-four north, range one, west, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force in effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. I missed that first part?
Yeah.
Let's get it.
We should cheer.
Or clap, let's clap.
You might, you might consider auctioneer school.
We're, we're passing on all three.
Yeah, let's, let's not make her do that again. All right. With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-seven carries on first reading. Please.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings of ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-seven.
I'll second that.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight thirty-seven carries on second and third.
All right. Moving on to item number forty-four. We'll open this public hearing to consider the redevelopment plan for the Cornhusker Auto Center redevelopment project. And to kick off discussion on this, Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Yes, the redevelopment application for this was submitted on February seventeenth and reviewed by the Economic Development Subcommittee on March twentieth. The Economic Development Subcommittee voted unanimously to move forward with acceptance of the redevelopment plan for the project. On May one, the Community Development Agency accepted the plan and forwarded it to the Planning Commission for a hearing and review and recommendation. Planning Commission hearing on this plan was held on May sixteenth, and the Planning Commission recommended approval on a six-zero vote. On June five, the agency unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of the redevelopment plan to the city council. This plan is enclosed in the agenda packet and is for redevelopment of the former Office Max facility. It's about a five-and-a-half-acre site, and will redevelop the approximately thirty thousand six hundred and seventy square foot box store building into a Nissan dealership. The redevelopers acquired the project site last year, and we used TIF for reimbursement of part of the acquisition cost. Total project cost, including renovation and rehabilitation, is expected to be over six million dollars. The redevelopers requesting TIF of four hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Without TIF, the projected return on investment is approximately eight-point-two percent. With TIF, it's approximately ten-point-four. That's a relatively narrow spread between the two projections. The additional turn, return with TIF allows the redevelopers to increase the size of the facility by ten to fifteen percent, which the redevelopers indicates is a critical component of the project's viability. And the redevelopers are here tonight and available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Welcome. Good evening.
Al Rogie with Cornhusker Auto.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. We started this project about a year ago, once we acquired the Office Max building for a potential building of the new Nissan store. The plans are for the development to take place within the next nine months. Projection, projected opening date would be sometime in the spring of next year. As you can see from the design architect drawings, as far as the building, our proposal included expanding the building by bringing the building out. Right now, there's a bump out on the front of the Office Max, which is actually a mezzanine up there. That entire front of the building would come out, and our plans are, as, as you can see on the picture, is to expand that building out farther with the use of the TIF dollars to be able to then expand our back area, excuse me, the service area, and be able to accommodate additional service bays. The picture, the next couple of pictures on there show, actually show site plan, which shows the design of the parking area, and the next slide shows the, how the development is going to look like. And what that bump out allowed us to do on the front was to be able to move that wall that separates the showroom from the service area by fifteen feet, allowing us to build an additional six stalls in the, in the service bay area. And the, the new facility is going to be a facility that's compatible with all new technology, with electric vehicles being a huge move. The vehi, the facility will have a charging station, a DC fast charger, which is able to charge electric vehicles in half an hour, and it would be open to the public. We're looking forward to it. This is going to be a huge, huge expansion of the Nissan store and the footprint of the Nissan, allowing us to serve our customers better.
Thank you, Al. Any questions? I would just make a comment. The investment you've already demonstrated in the ShopCo building, a huge benefit to the community, I think, given especially the fact that there are a lot of communities that have buildings like that, that they still don't know what to do with. They either get torn down, or they sit there for years and years. But your creative reuse of that building and of this building is helping spur new economic development in the city and utilizing existing resources in a very beneficial way. So, appreciate that.
Thank you. I do have a question. So, not only do you have a, a nice layout here and a nice improvement to that building, but you anticipating any future growth, like with your employment?
We, we are anticipating growing our employment by at least twenty employees, if not thirty. And a lot of that, our current location has seven service bays. Our new location would have eighteen, which would allow us to add a lot of service staff into our, into our facilities, like we've done with our Ford store. And that is, in current environment, the service side of the car or auto industry. And that is, in current environment, the service side of the car or auto industry is probably the biggest part of the, of the operation. You know, average vehicle age on the road right now is at the highest it's ever been at twelve and a half years. So that is creating a huge demand on our service department.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now.
Jim McKenzie, I know it won't make a difference, but I'm going to continue to speak out about the never-ending free flow of TIF dollars for anyone who comes forward and asks. If I were the developer and there was a free half million dollars for the taking, I would take it too. This is nothing against Al or Julie. They run a very respectable and successful, multiple respectable and successful auto dealerships. However, the average citizens of Norfolk must make up for the TIF dollars so easily handed out by the city council. There simply must be some controls put in place. The four hundred and seventeen thousand dollar TIF gift becomes six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, almost six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of tax money. The rest of the community must make up for after adding interest over fifteen years. The developers said they need TIFs with their return as ten point four percent instead of eight point two percent. I don't believe the taxpayers of Norfolk really need to guarantee a ten point four percent return. According to the 2022 annual TIF report issued in May one, 2023, the city council, at the city council meeting, the maximum TIF financing for the 2022 projects alone was nine million two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. I don't believe this figure includes interest, so the total tax dollars given away is likely much higher. This is money that the city, the schools, the county, the college, and others will not receive because it was gifted as TIF. The citizens of Norfolk must make up this amount every year when they pay their property taxes. And this was only for 2022. It does not include all the other TIF projects in prior years that we're still making up for. Please stop the madness. Create real TIF policies so the taxpayers of Norfolk do not have to continue to shell out more and more property tax dollars every year to make up for the TIF dollars. Thank you.
Jim, what would you do with that Office Max building? So say, so say Ralph comes and says, hey, I want TIF for this Office Max.
I would say that there's no TIF available. And whoever develops it, whatever developer is going to come, we just can't continue to, to continue to ask the rest of the taxpayers to make up for it.
So say it sets empty for ten years, then were you right or wrong telling them no?
I don't believe it'll set empty for ten years.
Well, say it does. Those buildings set empty all the time for ten years.
Well, that's a theoretical. You can't guess on theoreticals. You just have to say.
It's not a theoretical. They set empty all the time.
It is a theoretical. You're saying what if?
Well, well, in Yankton, look at the building sitting empty right now.
Well, I, I don't believe everything.
Well, I'm just saying there's another side of that. I agree with a portion of what you're saying. But when Al comes in and says, I'm going to develop this property, there's a fine line between saying, where he says, I'm not going to do this, this building's going to sit empty, and us saying, okay, what's it going to take, TIF dollars to make this happen?
I mean, you just had a, a new building get built right out there. So another developer said, gosh, we think there's enough business. I'm going to build a brand-new building between those. To say that building's going to sit empty is not even a realm of possibility.
Office Max isn't there no more. We never thought that was possible.
That's their business. But another developer built a brand-new building between Shopko and Office Max, did they not?
Herburgers.
And also received TIF, if I remember. Right. Thanks.
There again, we have more TIF. Does everything, does every building, every project?
I agree with you on a large part of it.
In the Herburgers meeting that you sat in, Justin, you said you spoke against TIF. And since then, you've said yes to every other TIF project.
No, that's because I do not believe we should finance a gas station. I do believe there's an economic impact on thousands of square feet sitting empty in the middle of our town. I do believe that. So you, you're right. A gas station, not for it. I believe thousands of square foot sitting empty in the middle of our town, there's an economic impact there. But, and I also believe there's a, we could do better on negotiating this. I do believe that.
I just think we are, we're leveraging and we're utilizing the rest of the taxpayers in the community to continue to give out TIF dollars. Other communities have policies, we don't. We just continue to give it and give it and give it.
But what, once this is done, we're looking at a six million dollar project sitting on there, on the tax rolls. Six million dollars. Right now, Office Max isn't worth hardly anything. Luckily enough, to somebody like Al that wants to renovate it, it's worth something. But I'll take a, I'll take a six million dollar project sitting in town that's going to get taxed.
And you're giving out six hundred and thirty-eight, so you're giving out ten percent of it in TIF and, and pre-tax dollars, so. Well, it's not pre.
I don't know if I'd call it free.
The tax, the taxes are still paid on the basis of the property during the fifteen year.
You're making it sound like there's zero taxes paid and that, like, that's.
That's not how TIF works. You know that, Jim. You, you know better, Jim.
It's from the report. It's in your council packet.
I see that.
And that's what it is. And that's the dollars that the rest of the community is going to have to make up to make up for those tax dollars because you're giving out TIF.
It's a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment?
To Jim's point, I, I agree. And I'm, I'm, I've always been about being careful of what we ask for and to develop. But one of the things that our property at the Ford Store has done, and so will this property, we will spend in a neighborhood of one point two to one point five million for equipment and, which is subject to property tax, personal property tax. So it will, this property, even though we're getting the tax financing, will generate additional dollars for the, for the taxes.
Are you going to buy that inside of city limits? So there's sales tax?
There's sales tax.
There you go.
Would you do this, would you do this project without TIF?
It would make it really hard to do. It would, when we looked at this property, we, we really, really were not in a position to do this after spending the money. But we wanted to make sure, this is about a legacy project for Julie and I. We want to leave behind better than what we found. And, and this will be a long-term development for the city of Norfolk. It is not a personal gain. It is, it's about dollars, but it, it's a big commitment. It's a, it's a twenty-year commitment on our, our family.
Thank you, Al. All right. Hearing no one else, move to close the hearing and proceed to item forty-five. I would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2023 dash twenty-nine approving the redevelopment plan for the Cornhusker Auto Redevelopment Project.
I'll make an offer to consider resolution number 2023 dash twenty-nine approving the redevelopment plan for Cornhusker Auto. Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023 dash twenty-nine is adopted.
All right. That takes us to our regular agenda and item number forty-six. Look for a motion to consider approval of the negotiated price with One Neck IT Solutions for a hundred and sixty-three thousand, a hundred and nine dollars, thirty-five cents for the network switches refresh project.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Brad, our IT manager. Brad?
Good evening, mayor and council. This request here is to replace networking hardware throughout all of the city buildings. If you're not sure what that is, kind of a quick definition, a network switch connects users' applications and IT equip, equipment like the tablets, phones and, and computers across the city network so they can all communicate with each other. They essentially keep the IT lights on. Our current switches are around the age of ten to fourteen years. A typical life cycle is about five to seven years. So we've definitely gotten our fair use out of them. This replacement will include additional redundancy as we move to more internet-based services like Office 365 and, and things like that. One of our biggest risks of not, not replacing these is unpredictable downtimes. We've had that recently where these switches are starting to fail. So moving forward is in our best interest if, if possible. If this is approved, hardware isn't as far out as it used to be. We're looking at about three to five months. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Brad. This is an investment or a modernization of technology that's been planned for some time within the department?
Definitely.
And you said this is going to be in all the city offices?
Correct.
So, I mean, like streets, they're building and so forth, those would be included?
Yep.
Okay.
How does it affect the day-to-day operations?
Currently, if there's a failure, that, that building is completely down until we get it replaced.
I meant, like during construction or during install, these switches, how does?
Most of the work will do after hours. There's a few locations that we're going to coordinate with for some downtime. But when we do replace these, that is going to be a complete outage.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brad. Any public input? Further discussion, council? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item forty-seven, with the permission to consider resolution number 2023 dash twenty-seven approving the preliminary plan development on property generally located at the northwest corner of East Norfolk Avenue and North Victory Road at the request of Norfolk Rentals LLC. As a note, resolution number 2023 dash twenty-seven was tabled at the June fifth city council meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number 2023 dash twenty-seven.
We'll first need a motion to take it off the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will make a motion to take it off the table.
I will second.
To take resolution 2023 dash twenty-seven off the table.
Okay. Motion second to remove from the table. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023 dash twenty-seven is removed from the table.
Now I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number 2023 dash twenty-seven.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. And for a refresher and some background on this, Val Grimes, our city planner, please.
Thank you. This preliminary plan development is for three eight-plex apartment buildings. They are supposed to be one-bedroom apartments to assist with adding new, new affordable housing stock to the community. The PD is requesting the variances to allow multiple buildings on one lot, a five-foot setback release on the southeast corner of one of the structures, and going to six twenty-five square feet dwelling unit instead of the minimum six fifty that is in code. And just for a little background, the comp plan, future land use map of this northwest corner of Norfolk Avenue and Highway thirty-five actually shows it as commercial. And so the multifamily residential use is less intense than what the comp plan calls for. And the residential use is more compatible with the existing residential in that general vicinity, but there are still buffering and screening requirements per code that we would get into as part of the, the final PD and, and such. If this preliminary PD passes, then the zone change request from an R1 to an R3 would come before you as part of the final plan development also. Because it, we do need both the zone changed, so the base zoning changed along with the plan development overlay. So that's just a, a little precursor if this does pass. Any questions?
Al, did you say the comp plan shows it as?
Commercial.
And right now, it's commercial?
It's R1 currently. But the future land use plan, because it's a major intersection of arterial roads, our comp plan actually calls for it to be commercial.
When was that comp plan done?
Twenty seventeen.
Remind us of the process. If this were to go forward tonight, what does that mean? It, it, it basically starts a process of working through a plan development with city staff and then comes back to planning commission and council for ultimate approval or not, correct?
Correct. So this is just the preliminary plan development, essentially giving them the okay to move forward with generally what they are proposing tonight. They have one year in which to go from a preliminary to get a final. So there is time to work some things through. They don't have to go immediately from preliminary to final. If this passes, then it would be a public hearing at both planning commission and council for the zone change. And then the final plan development would go before planning commission again, not as a public hearing, but then come back as a public hearing at city council for final approval.
To summarize some of the discussion we had last week, and anybody's free to, to come up, we'll allow for public input once again if needed. But there were some concerns expressed about a development like this and impacts on the existing sewage system. There were some concerns from council members expressed about aesthetics and curb appeal. And we can certainly revisit some of those. I, I would invite the developer to come forward to, to talk about a comfort level with addressing some of those concerns about aesthetics that were addressed by the council if he, if he so chooses.
I partner with Norfolk Rentals. Yes, some of the concerns were brought up, the aesthetics, curb appeal. We have discussed with the drafter about possibly going like a brick up to the windows on the front side. We've talked about the landscape and adding trees to buffer, I guess, Norfolk Avenue, the south side of the property and then also it'd be inside the, the loop, if you will, the, the two grassy areas that would be on the east side of the property. Then obviously, we have the screening on the west side for the residents that live on the west for the, for the circle drive. Again, yeah, this is the preliminary drawing. We don't want to spend more time and money if it's not going to go any further, but if it is, again, working with the city on to what this all looks like for the final.
And you have a recognition, Chad, that that is part of the process with preliminary plan development, that, that zoning designation allows the city to have a little bit more, say, in specific guidelines for aesthetics than maybe, say, an R3 zoning designation? And that you're, and you're comfortable with that?
Correct. Because I could ask just for a regular zoning change and combine these all into one roof, if you will. But we like this layout for the lot. And again, working with the city on what it actually, the finished product looks like.
Chad, I do have a question. Why did you choose this location for these, for this, this development?
How long ago?
No, why?
Oh, why this location? The size of the lot with the amount of units that we wanted to do, I know it's been for sale for many, many years. And there is a lot of growth on the east side of Norfolk Avenue. You can go north or south and see the apartment buildings. And so that's why we were looking on this end of town initially. It would have been a little over a year ago, I believe. So, yeah, we weren't looking at developing ten, fifteen, twenty acres. We were looking at a smaller lot and smaller units.
Your type of development here doesn't really require any type of frontage to make it successful, does it?
No.
Chad, for affordability's sake, smaller units, I assume, are a pretty critical factor in that, that, and you're finding a market that there, there is a need for smaller units that allows you to build more affordably. Is that accurate?
Correct. That's, yeah. The. Correct, that's, yeah, the size of unit there is simple. But we have a lot of demand for this price range and just simple units. They're not looking for all the amenities that some places offer, but it also comes at a price. And we're not offering those amenities, but we are offering affordable housing for them.
You have other units that you've constructed similar to this manner, similar to this layout?
Oh, we have other units, yes, we've never built ground floor, but no, we have, yeah, fifty-two other units in Norfolk.
That you own and manage?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Chad while he's up here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input discussion on this?
Hi, my name's Brittany Compton, and we live next to where this is being proposed to be built. I guess since the last meeting, I've come up with some other, I guess, concerns and questions regarding this. I'm gonna start off, the facade of the apartments does not really fit the current landscape, as we just discussed. In the past, current council and mayor have been on beautifying the corridors as entryways into the town. I don't see how this plan would be doing so. Given what it's presented to look like, this just does not come off as anything but a small town hotel look. And I don't see how it fits into the city's comprehensive plan. And I guess I don't know why we would be, why the setback requirements in the apartment size are being considered as exceptions for this project. I also have to know, does public safety come into play with only having one entrance into this? And keep in mind, the entrance is also right in front of a driveway of a residential home, of which that individual has to back out onto the road with how their driveway is designed. And also, from living there, my family, as well as all the Ukrainians at the end of the drive, frequently ride their bikes out on that bypass road, and there is no sidewalks, that road is tight. When forklift buses were coming and picking up the Ukrainians and taking them places, you can't even make the turn through that drive, let alone, the Ukrainians are out riding their bikes every day. It's something they seem to enjoy, my family seems to enjoy. I'm concerned with the entrance and exits right there, how that is gonna be possible. I guess another question, if this would be passed tonight, changing it from an R-one to an R-three, was mentioned in the previous meetings that his plan would be to use the existing tree line there. If you look at the tree line on Google Earth or even just drive by, the tree line is not solid. There is this huge section, there's no trees. And to me, if you would plant trees, that gap is so large that it would be, it would be years before the tree line would be full. And to actually create a break between the two properties. And also, right where that gap is, where there's no trees currently, is where the dumpsters would be. So that is the closest part to our property, closest part to where our house sits, closest part to where we entertain outside, I guess it's not something that we would like to see. If this would pass, I guess we would like to see a full fence line run that full distance between us. One question I had also, since this is low income, are housing vouchers going to be taken and what percentage? And I know low-income housing was stated, that the previous meetings, all that was really spoken about, is how the builders contacted frequently about housing for seniors. So why not just make it strictly senior housing if this passes? Another concern I have is, it was brought at previous meetings where the water runoff would go. It was talked about being ran across the road into the ditch, into the gravel road, into the ditch. Back in two thousand nineteen, when we had the ice jam back up, that ditch was full. And that, the ditch tapers off down towards the yellow house where the Ukrainians are being housed, and that parking lot was flooded. I guess my concern is how can you potentially say that that's not gonna happen again, using that as a runoff? And my last question I bring is, why are these apartments not required to have a retention pond? Or are the apartments on the corner of two-seventy-five as well, Prime Stop, are required to have so? The majority of these properties and buildings are gonna be concrete and just roof with limited landscaping. So my concern is to where all that water runoff is gonna go, and it not affect my property or the property that Terry Medlin owns at the end of the lane.
Thank you, Brittany, I've got just one question. So, that area is currently zoned as R-one, so theoretically, any kind of single-family housing could be built. Would you have concerns with any other kind of housing being built right next to you?
Honestly, to me, this is worst-case scenario. Duplexes, triplexes, anything smaller than twenty-four apartments, which we said last time can house up to two people in an apartment, so that's up to forty-eight people in and out all the time.
Is the concern just more people living next to you, or certain kinds of people living next to you?
No, not necessarily, it's just I feel like it's gonna be very crammed and a lot of traffic on a road that there's really not, I guess, room for how it sits.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish you may comment? Okay, any discussion, council?
I guess I do have a question, and maybe Steve, this is morally directed towards you, but she did bring up a good point about a retention pond. How does this particular proposal not require a retention pond?
It does. I stated at the last meeting, retention will be required. As we would work with the developer, we would look at how to, what that volume requirement would be, and then how do we get that within his site? Obviously, he's, with the development, you're looking at the exterior or the extremities of the site to make that happen. Just walking the site and looking at it and looking at the development, I'm pretty confident that we can get the required detention within that existing site. We would use both the eastern side and those areas, those areas of green space as well as the area on the south. But again, I haven't, he hasn't come to us with any kind of numbers or anything on that, so. But it is certainly required. One thing I would point out too, and we do have information on our city website, there was an eastern, there was a drainage study done on the east side. And that particular area, under a hundred-year event, is completely inundated with water. All of that area is. And so, I just wanna be, kinda get that out there for conversation, regardless of what this developer does in terms of, and just what happens on that site in a hundred-year event, that entire area, all the way up and through Legacy Bend, has surface water.
So would this be required to be built one foot above by elevation level?
We would be encouraging, yeah, to look at this study and build one foot above this elevation, which may be higher than the actual hundred-year, you know, the current published hundred-year map through firm.
Yeah, currently, there is no floodplain on this, so we can't require them to build one foot above because they're not in the floodplain. This is a drainage study that we would encourage them to build up, but it's not an actual official floodplain.
Thank you. And then, I know this was brought up the last time, and I believe Brittany just brought it up again, was, what about shooting the water off to the, off to the south underneath the culvert pipe that is there?
Well, eventually, eventually, any stormwater there works its way over to that culvert and then goes south. So that is the larger outlet for that area. Generally, our drainage requirements are that the twenty-five-year event is retained on site, and anything above the twenty-five-year event would runoff. So a thirty-year event, a fifty-year event, the first twenty-five years is retained or detained on site. It's released slowly, but anything over that, a bigger event, a fifty-year, a hundred-year event, will leave the site.
So does that require a culvert pipe from this property across the private right-of-way or the private road that was mentioned the last two weeks ago to go to this pipe that we're discussing right now?
No, no.
How do we get it over the roadway?
Well, the existing pipe that goes underneath Norfolk Avenue would be the outlet for whatever is on that site.
Yeah, but we gotta cross that, the access road. How do we, I mean, my question is, how do we get it on the other side of the access road so it can distinguish to go south?
What I see, what I see right here is a culvert on the, you know, that culvert right there extends under that access road.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion, council?
I guess I'd just like to make a comment on here, you know, I know I'm probably, I'm probably falling in line a little bit more with the comp plan recommendation to keep this particular area commercial. I like, I like the idea, I like the affordability of these places, I think they're great. And actually support that, I just don't know if I support the location. We have a roundabout in a corridor, Highway thirty-five. I just feel like maybe commercial is, they were on to something on that comp plan, in my opinion. But I don't know if they necessarily like to have a business right next to their house either, because that's what commercial would bring. But I do struggle a little bit with us having to make exceptions to fit these buildings on this lot, and yet there's still gonna be room for a retention pond. That, that does kinda concern me also. But I like the project, I just don't know if I like the location.
Yeah, and I can't, without engaging with the developer, I certainly couldn't tell you that as a function of any kind of a final PD that there's gonna be thirty buildings on that site, or thirty units on that site. He could have to lose three, four, five of those units to get his detention on, so that's a very real possibility.
Which, I would say, the process, again, is somewhat at the starting point here, a preliminary plan development to work through some of those things and determine what could fit and what can't. And again, would have to come back before planning commission and the city council for ultimate approval with public hearings involved. So, and to the point on the comp plan and commercial, I think we'd be having a whole nother discussion right now if there was a proposal before us that was commercial for, say, a gas station or something like that. Any other questions or comments, council? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members voting in opposition, resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-seven is not adopted.
Item forty-eight would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number three-F with J.H. Hesby Company Incorporated for the Johnson Park Norfolk River Restoration Restroom and Parking Lot Project resulting in a net decrease of nineteen thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of change order number three-F with J.H. Hesby Company. Second.
Motion and second for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramis, please.
Mayor and council, this would be the, as read, the final change order for the parking lot and restroom project at Johnson Park that was constructed by J.H. Hesby. The final change order is a net decrease change order on the project. We had about sixteen thousand dollars decrease in irrigation and hydro seed. We had another decrease relative to thirteen hundred twenty-nine square feet of walk and changed the trail, again, there's some additional detail included in the pack. But those were the two large deducts, there were some, in the construction of the facility and the excavation, we had to do some overexcavation to get the footings solid, you know, on solid ground as a function to build the walls on. And we eliminated, or we added some truncated dome pads as well for ADA purposes. So, overall, again, a really good project over there. Appreciate the work and coordination done by Jim Langy at Hesby. Made our job pretty easy, so. I'd certainly answer any questions that council has related to the change order.
Good, thank you, Steve. Any questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item forty-nine would look for a motion to consider approval of a professional services consultant agreement with Embrahs Group LLC for stormwater training for an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand forty dollars.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second, and once again, Steve, give us some background on this, please.
Mayor and council, attached here is a contract, including a scope of services with a company named Embrahs. They're located in Omaha. Embrahs, one of the engineers there at Embrahs originally worked with us back in the twenty-fifteen, sixteen, seventeen timeframe. As we were looking at regional retention, that is a conversation that we do intend to bring back to the table. But as we were working with them and talking to them about regional retention, our stormwater, our stormwater program, a lot of the struggles we've had in monitoring and enforcing that program, we wanted to prepare a training program to train the trainer, the trainer being Whitney Lindsay within our office. She's the one that carries our, the permit compliance responsibilities for our stormwater program. She also manages our MS four, which is part of that. And so what this scope would do is, would help walk through the engineering staff, the requirements of the Clean Water Act, how those requirements from the original Clean Water Act were modified over the many years that that's been in place, and how those requirements come down to the DNR and DEE, and then our, we're look to enforce those through stormwater pollution prevention plans and other monitoring plans. So this is gonna train our stormwater manager, provide her training tools then to go to the community, train our home builders, train our staff, get more information on our website, work with our city attorney to create enforcement tools that are easier for us to work with to get compliance, so. And that's what this contract's gonna do.
Thank you, Steve, any questions? Any public input?
What's this look like, Steve, is this like a one-day training, a one-week training, an ongoing training?
The initial training, so they're gonna come in, they're gonna look at our stormwater code, so that as part of training the trainer, they understand what we currently have in place. We have stormwater manuals, there's various enforcement manuals out there. So first, they need to understand the various tools or resources we have, how those connect into city code. About a year and a half ago, as we brought that position on with staff, we had gone through a fairly significant rewrite of code, we've been holding on to that, we need to move that forward. So they're gonna help us move that code rewrite forward. The train the trainer, as they come in and, you know, engage with us with various conversations about our code, about the Clean Water Act, eventually that'll work down into about a four-hour training session for staff. And then from there, we want to get that down to about a one-hour, kind of a canned training program. want to get that down to about a one hour, kind of a canned training program that we can carry to, again, home builders association, general contractors, other city staff, we can, you know. Other questions?
So we're gonna have one person be the trainer on staff here then, after this?
Correct, correct. That would be Whitney, Whitney in conjunction with Anna, our assistant city engineer.
I would recommend that, once you get that down to that hour long version, that maybe council sit in on, on those as well.
Absolutely, it's in, you know, it's very important that we all, it's an important program nationally, those laws do change on a, not an un, unregular basis, so sometimes it is a challenge keeping up with them, but I think the more we all understand how those rules and regulations boil down to permits, and what the impact to us as a community can be if, if we're working outside those permits, you know, we, we currently, we know we have issues with dust, it's a function of Nebraska and, and our incohesive soils, we know we have issues with, with potential rainfall and runoff, I've had many very uncomfortable phone calls in the middle of the night where there's mud running down a street, and, you know, there's no reason for that, the bottom line is, there's just no reason for that, when you look at other communities, other states where, where these programs have been well implemented, the very first thing you see on a project is silt fence go up, unfortunately, it's not uncommon, that's the last thing you see, and it takes a lot of conversation sometimes for us to get a contractor to put silt fence up, so, again, working with city attorney and understanding what we can and can't do in terms of that permit compliance and penalty, and being able to levy that penalty, gonna be an important part of this.
So this is a federal mandate?
This is a federal mandate that's pushed to the states and then pushed to the municipalities, the communities.
Currently, do we not enforce this, I know we have a stormwater pollution plan, but do we not enforce?
We do.
Infractions?
Uh, I would say, I would say, you know, the infraction part is something that we need to work on.
And that's, and that, that'll, this will help with that, or something, okay?
Yep, yep, we wanna make that, hopefully we make that process more understood, cleaner and easier to implement.
Does the federal government give us the money to pay for the training?
They don't, they did for a while, you know, the first two or three years of the program, kind of winding back to about twenty fifteen-ish, there were dollars made available for us, and then as those dollars ran out, we had to implement that stormwater fee, so there were dollars there for us to get our feet on the ground, and the people involved at that time are no longer here, and, you know, the, just the translation of those, whatever, whatever was created, it's, just didn't carry down.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, last but not least, we move into item fifty, which allows for a public comment period, which is done on a quarterly basis, so anyone wishing to come forward with comment can do so at this time.
Okay, I'm Steve Sehi, hi, hi Nate, anyway, week and a half ago, we had a big softball tournament at Tahoe's Zuka Park, they're in different age groups, there's fifty teams, and from Monroe, if you take Fifth Street straight down, across the road, that was considered gate two, I was, I was there selling tickets to people from out of town coming in, and to say the least, I was pretty embarrassed, here's what happened, we're sitting there, and all these people from out of town come in and they say, where's this field, where's that field, we said, we have no idea, we don't know, and Saturday morning, I was down there working again, after I was there Friday night, and on the telephone pole there was a sign A and B pointing south, first of all, I did send an email to Nate, I said, this is stupid, this is embarrassing, I said, why is there not bigger signs on these fields, for these fields for out of town people, now this tournament was put on by Kelly's Girls, I have no affiliation with Kelly's softball whatsoever, I don't have any girls playing, no granddaughters, no nothing, so, I sent, emailed him, and I said, hey, why are these fields not, not marked better, you know, when you go out of Tahoe's Zuka Park going east, and you go by all these fields, there's no reason why the parks department cannot have a big sign with a big number two, or whatever number on the outside of those fences, for people out of town driving by, oh, there's field three, or there's field two, Nate said, yeah, they're marked, go down there, take a look, I did, Sunday, went down there, took a bunch of pictures, and the biggest sign that's on a fence is a twelve inch by twelve inch, that's it, so all I'm saying, I know no action be, can be taken tonight, but I'm just saying, for future, why can't we have bigger signs on the outside of these fences for people that are out of town, from out of town, on another thing, this is with the softball fields also, I went down there, there's fields one through five, and you have A, B, and clear up to F, why cannot they just be one through whatever, nine, ten, whatever, every, all of them marked, you know, how simple is that, my God, and one more thing, I got a question, it was brought up a couple months ago here, my question is this, if somebody buys a brand new golf cart, and if they order seat belts to be installed in, is that considered altering a golf cart? Okay, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else?
I'm Mark Nelson, I didn't want to address anything about the Cornhusker Project, because, you know, I really don't know and, and had anything to offer on that, but on TIF in general, you know, I guess I agree a lot with, with Jim, I think there should be some overriding principles, like how much of our property is gonna be TIF, communicating with the, the citizens, and it'd be nice to know, you know, what is the real tax impact on the citizens, and I know you can say, well, it's a moving target, because you're developing increasing valuation, but I just think, overall, there needs to be some kind of limit on how much is done, and what is legal is not necessarily right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, anyone else?
My name is Tim Ernst, and since Mr. Sehi brought up the deal of golf carts, you know, the roof, the copy of the rules I got from, from the city police, it is impossible to license one, number one, it says that a golf cart cannot go over twenty mile an hour, the only one that comes with seat belts goes over twenty mile an hour, so that rules that one out, secondly, it says that you have to have seat belts, the newer ones are registered, are limited to nineteen point seven mile an hour, I don't know whether it's federal law or state law, but anything under twenty doesn't need seat belts, number two, it says the cart cannot be altered, so if you install seat belts on there, you're altering that cart, also, it says it needs to have, meet federal regulations, there ain't nothing on those things heavy enough to meet federal res, regulations, also, it's kinda ironic, you need to have a bicycle flag on there, there's not a bicycle in town that's got a flag on it, worried about not seeing them, if people can see all these bicycles running around town with no lights, no flashers, no nothing, you can sure as hell see golf cart, you know, if you didn't want them on the street, just say so, but what you voted to do, that you voted where it'd be all right to have them on the street, okay, let's make it so you can, and also you have on there that you can't cross the street unless it's by a light, I'd like to see you try and get across Twenty-Fifth Street, or Eighteenth Street, or any of those, there's not a light on any of them, you know, so, he made it impossible, and as far as I know, there's only one license in town, and that's illegal, because his seat belts were added, and so they do not meet federal regulations, that's all.
Thank you, Tim, anyone else?
Oh, let's see, I got a question here, I guess, do you have a milling head for your bobcats?
Sir, first, can you please state your name for the record, please?
What?
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, Lonnie Sandal.
Thank you.
Yes, we do.
Do ya? Milling head?
Yes.
To grind concrete?
Yes.
When the streets get up, and there's one that high, can't you mill them down? That's hard on soap files, and that's hard on front ends on vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to, but a, like a, a blow up or?
In the street, it'll be up that high, up that high, and I had to put a thousand dollars in the front end of my pickup. Now, okay.
If you see one, you probably call Steve and he'll help you.
Didn't get that question answered, I guess, oh, that street, what are you gonna do with that, Seventh between Michigan and Pazwa, that westbound, west lane, the southbound lane is a mess, I wanted to take you for a ride, you wouldn't go.
Wasn't, I didn't know where I was going, exactly.
Oh, they filled it, and fill them, and fill them, and then that stuff breaks out, and it's in the yards, it's plugging up automatic sprinklers.
And I know crews have been in there working, doing some more permanent patching in there, but historically, we've only had access to a, what, what we call it?
Is that Silvex you're putting in there?
Not now, no, now we're putting in actual hot mix.
Oh, hot mix?
That's what we're doing now, yeah, so we have, we've got some new equipment, hot box and rollers, so they're using tack and, tack and actual hot asphalt, or hot mix, so, but historically, the problem has been, yes, it's been more of that, that temporary Silvex type, type product, that winter product.
Was there any investigation as to condition of that street before you'd done this three lane thing, because that asphalt is that thick, that old asphalt?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question, but...
Did you check it out to see if it handled traffic, just that lane?
Are you talking Seventh Street?
Seventh Street.
And when did we?
You ever been down it?
Oh, yeah, on a regular basis, yeah.
How many of you guys been down it?
I don't know when the...
At the speed limit, in the west lane, not in the middle, in the west lane, left the fire trucks there all were in the middle, everything, but, uh...
Saying by the curb it's bad? Are you saying by the curb it's bad? Are you saying the road's rough by the curb there on Seventh Street, in the west lane?
That whole street, holes in there, the first, the second year that was out like that, there were holes in there that big, and I seen a chunk of that asphalt come flying out when the car hit the hole, and those cars like across the street, and it just, a chunk about that big, and it just missed the windshield, and I don't think that hot mix will hold it.
Yeah, I mean, all, all I can say is, I know this, I know this year...
We put Silvex in holes in the highway.
Yeah, we don't, we're not using the Silvex anymore.
And it didn't help, it didn't hold.
We use Silvex, we, historically, we've always used Silvex, we just didn't have the equipment to manage it.
That was a good street, tell me, I'll bet you've spent more on that street since you made it a three lane than you spent twenty years before that, and I've been there twenty some years.
I guess it's, it's just a two lane right now, so I'm not sure when you talk three lane, what you're referring...
Well, you park on the east side.
Okay, so the, the, the two travel lanes in the parking?
Has been mirrors broke, windows broke?
Yeah, I'm more than, I'm, I'm certainly, you know, will consume, consume your comments here tonight, but I don't know there's gonna be any desire to get rid of parking on that street, but, I, I'm, we are working on the condition issue, so...
Are we gonna get nice rolling hills on that, like, got over here on Thirteenth, with green grass on it, besides weeds?
Rolling hills.
There used to be green grass over there, I got pictures of stuff with, setting over there with green grass around it.
Mr. Sandal, thank you, I know, even, even though I didn't take you up on that ride, we did have a staff member who did, Mr. Lutt did, did ride with you onto Seventh Street and took notice of some of your concerns, and I think the street department's been out there on some of those in terms of the drainage and storm sewers.
What are we gonna do about that curb, that mess, that water backing up, getting over the sidewalk?
I think that's some of what you guys have been, what I'm looking at, the street department have, have been looking at.
I, that was, been that way since nineteen ninety-four, when there was trees there, where you, lens between the sidewalk and the street, I clean all that up, haul it out, they should've took it over across the street, that's your problem.
Can I ask?
I didn't, but I didn't, I mowed that too, over across the street for a year, the house to the south, and the two houses to the north.
Can I ask, can I ask you a question on that parking? Can I ask you a question on the parking, do you, do you think it's better to be parking on that east side of the road, or should that be on the west side of the road, what do you think of the parking?
You've never been over there?
I'm up and down it all the time, but I don't like it, I don't like the parking, I don't like the parking on the east side, I think it should be on the west, I'm just, I'm curious of your opinion. I was just curious of your opinion, what you think of that, I look at it as people parking on the east side, and they have to walk across a very busy street, and maybe that...
Yeah, there's been mirrors broke, well, the guy second house north, he's got a straight wall around him, there are holes in that.
Would you rather see the parking on the west side, or on the east side of that street?
Like it was before.
That's what we used to do, they used to have gardens in there.
Yeah, I think that's railroad property, that we can't be doing that anymore, or, I know there's landscaping going...
uh, I know there's landscaping going on there that-
That isn't all railroad property.
But there's still landscaping going on there that's not part of the homeowner's property, so. Right?
And that street gets narrower, going to the north. You look at the south end, it looks like, it's like this.
Sure.
But, uh, out that curve.
Yeah. Well, I would suggest that after this meeting, you talk to Will, who is our streets director, about some of the things that they've, uh, done over there, and, uh, or didn't plan to do.
Yeah. You had one meeting here, and there was one was supposed to have one of the street supervisors here, and I told him all about it. I don't know what his name was, he didn't take names.
Gentleman right behind you, in the gray shirt, Will.
Years ago, years ago, I started calling, yep, well, put her on the list, yep, that list I never, I don't think ever materialized. And I don't know who does your inspecting of your streets. In twenty-some years, somebody surely would've caught that.
Yeah. Well, we've, uh, had to make a lot of reforms within our, our street department, and they're fairly recent, so, uh, there's, there's some new, new folks I think you should talk to, and they'll try to help you.
And that storm drain down there on the end, that was never clean until I showed you that picture.
Yeah, well. See, you brought it to our attention, we try to do something about it. Let's, let's keep that, uh, let's keep that going, so. Well, for the sake of letting anyone else who, who wants to talk tonight, we, we need to conclude.
It's old, all in that dirt in there, it's no good, there's weeds come up in there, every year there's something different. I've sprayed and sprayed and sprayed and sprayed, like it's clean.
Yes, sir. Sure.
Needs to be taken out. Can, can I put rock in there?
I don't know, that, that is a question we'd have to address with, with, with staff. And I'd suggest that if you can stay for a few minutes after the meeting, we'll talk, we can talk through some of those things.
Uh, rock there, and then that, between the two driveways to the north, there's like a D shape there. And I've had grass in there, well, somebody comes in there and drives and threw in the grass, and now it's all even.
Yeah. Sir, thank you, thank, thank you for your time tonight.
I told the neighbor a year ago, when I called, I said, I called the city again, told them about that curb, and I said, well, told him, I said, well, I'll be pushing daisies before I ever see that fixed. And that might be sooner, you, you never know anymore. But I've put up with that for years, and I just call every once in a while. Every year, I do.
Sir.
See if anything ever come of it, never did.
Mr. Sandel, I made a good list of stuff to talk about, you wanna come back with me and talk?
Are you the one I took for a ride?
It was a good time.
You want another ride?
Well-
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Sandel.
I was showing you pictures. I'll look at pictures. Sometimes breeze, or you get a lot of water, all the junk come down from there.
Thank you, Mr. Sandel. Anyone else wishing to comment? All right, we'll have, we'll have a chance to talk after the meeting. Jim, go ahead.
I recently saw a photo online of a parks department vehicle with an elaborate new vehicle wrap. I guess my question is, how much did that cost, and why is that necessary? According to today's agenda, the Keno revenue is down seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars year-to-date. And yet, we can afford a two to three thousand dollar vehicle wrap? I guess that raises more eyebrows again. A few months ago, there was a push-on to move forward with the police department building expansion, and now that's gone silent. I guess my question is, why has that gone silent? And what is the status? I've heard that the public budget hearing for all divisions is gonna last a full day. The city council will be asked to vote at that meeting to approve each budget, and move it forward to the council meeting in September for final approval. It will be virtually impossible for any citizen to have input into the budgeting process. We will likely receive, excuse me, we have received, um, massive increases in our assessed values on our properties, and citizens are already on the edge about more property tax increases. The budget that we will be reviewing, we'll probably only get two days' notice before we have a chance to even review it before the meeting. And at the meeting, there's really no opportunity for real citizen involvement in the budgeting process. This has to change. We need to look into more of a participatory budgeting process. Right now, with a full-day budget hearing, you get it two days in advance, it's many, many pages long, I don't know how you guys even have a chance to review it, in fact, I think a lot of things slip through, so I urge you to take a look at this process and improve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir, we will, we will talk to you offline. Is anyone else wishing to speak?
One little bit.
You've had your chance, sir, please. We, we could be doing this all night, we, we've gotta do this in order.
You know, if you do, if that loading thing, if it was done like Johnny Kay, one piece at a time, you probably would've liked to do it.
All right, thank you.
Everybody says that, you talk to people about, if it's done in police and the street-
Thanks, thank you.
Uh, Brett Brooks, twenty-two oh four Island Drive, Norfolk. I'm already signed in. I knew I should've gotten up here before, uh, Jim, he stole my thunder. Because what I wanna talk to you about is the police department. Norfolk Police Department handles incoming assistance calls for both Norfolk and Madison County. They coordinate the nine eleven call center for the northeast Nebraska area. Those two things, to my best recollection, were approved by the council. Here's number three. Responsible for licensing golf carts and off-road vehicles. That was, uh, approved by the council. About a year ago, Norfolk experienced some annexation. When this annexation is fully built out, there's gonna be a need for more police protection. The current building is aspire, is experiencing severe, uh, overcrowding. There's files in the hallway. Additional space is needed for interrogations, for, uh, writing up reports and citations, city jail facilities, and police department offices. The current facility is over thirty-five years old. In that time, there has been no outward expansion, to the best of my knowledge. Expansion plans exist. The council is supportive of the expansion. The public, if I'm to believe what over a hundred and fifty people told me, as I walked around during the time of the city initiative and knocked on doors, told me that they were supportive of the police department. Back to blue, there was all kinds of signs up. The ballot initiative obviously failed, big time. Where, where are we with any type of a plan as to how we're going to pay for this police department expansion? To Jim's point, this was brought up a couple of months ago, I got up and talked in support of a plan, everything has just totally gone dead radar. Haven't heard a thing about it. And it, it really concerns me. If we have any kind of a, God forbid, a disturbance, a series of, Lord knows what, that requires the public's attention, they're gonna go to the police department. We're trying right now to hire some additional policemen. It's getting tough, it's tough statewide, it's tough nationwide. We talk about back in the blue, we talk about doing this and doing that, but at the end of the day, we don't do anything. And it's getting real frustrating. And the failure to plan is a plan for failure. Questions?
Brett, thank you for bringing that forward. It, it does, uh, lead me to have a few questions. I know that you were supportive of the, uh, sales tax initiative that would have paid for a police department expansion, obviously, as you stated, that failed. We did then have public discussions at these council meetings earlier in the year about potentially implementing an occupation tax just on alcohol sold in the city of Norfolk to help pay, to, to pay for police expansion specifically. The, the reality is, and I know you know this too, is we don't have ten-plus million dollars laying around City Hall to, to pay for it, and so we have to generate that revenue to do it. So are, are you saying with that, that you supported the earlier discussion about an alcohol, occupation tax, uh, on alcohol paying for this? I'm just guessing, you're right, there hasn't been any more momentum on this, but we did hear from some citizens who seemed to say, we don't want any more taxes regardless of, uh, what they're on. So if, if you were to listen to those, and I'm not sure that, uh, that they speak for a majority on this issue, but if you're, if you're to listen to them, what to do then? What to do to, to pay for the needed, uh, expansion of the police department?
That's my question to you as a council. Because better than half of the people sitting on this council formulated the plan for the initiative and included all four things. I've got feelings about that, I'm not against any of those things, but as a result, the thing got totally voted down, we don't have any, uh, money incoming. I know nobody likes new taxes. But if some thought would've been given, where was some of that tax money actually going to come from? It was going to come from people coming to Norfolk and spending their money. But we blew that chance by blowing away that sales tax initiative. But at some point, we've got to address things. In the thirty years that I've lived in this town, I have seen and dealt with the condition of our streets. And I'll be honest with you, if I was somebody coming into town for something, whether it's an event or whatever, I would be embarrassed. There's more, and, and this applies to a lot of other things. Shortcuts have been taken to solve problems, and we're living with the results of it right now. The, some of the, of the streets up in my area where I live, when I moved in there, they were dirt fields. All of a sudden, whoa, we got all kinds of nice houses, we got streets and everything. Those streets are, I'm not even gonna trouble you with the word, they're breaking up. There's been all kinds of repairs up in that area. And all because somebody in the city decided, well, we're gonna take a shortcut here and a shortcut there, just to get some streets up in this area, so we can get some nice houses built and one thing or another. That's fine. But at the end of the day, we got to quit taking shortcuts. And if we're gonna be the city that we think we wanna be, or we are, or whatever, we better get with it. And it's gonna require some additional payments. I mean, I heard tonight about, they want an eight percent on an eight percent on an eight percent for a, a water project. If you want all this stuff, you're gonna have to pay for it. And I know that in this day and age, nobody likes to hear anymore about taxes. Hell, my tax, property tax increased, uh, considerable here a couple weeks ago, when I got the notice. And it said, well, you can go down and talk about it, see if you can get it reduced, well, it isn't gonna, isn't gonna happen. So I've, uh, interrupted everybody's dinner plans, but-
Well, I, I appreciate you bringing those things up. I think to summarize a lot of what you're saying, it's, uh, you get what you pay for, right?
Yeah.
Um, we've talked about in this space before, how we've had to, in recent years, reform a lot of practices in how we construct streets, and how we maintain and repair them, because you get what you pay for. Uh, we've seen that historically, we're, we're seeing that now, I mean, it's, yes, we have no extra local sales tax on the rolls, we have the second or third lowest property tax, um, in the state, and that, that's a good thing in a lot of ways. But it also creates a deficit when it comes time to pay for things like a police expansion or better streets, and so we're, we're forced to look at different ways to do that. That's just the facts of the matter. And it's not for lack of trying, as you know, not for lack of trying, to, to be creative, to find ways to make new investments in the city that help it grow.
I wanna say the occupational tax, wasn't it like twenty years with occupational tax versus five-year with the sales tax? Bond?
No, the sales tax was twenty years.
But I'm saying, for just the police expansion, it was much shorter term with just the sales tax versus occupation tax, if I remember it.
Yes, it was, and I can't remember exactly what those, uh, term of those was, and we were looking at several different options for that, but yes, it was much shorter than twenty years.
With the sales tax, yeah.
But to Brett's point, that conversation has not gone anywhere.
Yeah, right, sure.
But I do think sales tax was the best way to pay for the police expansion, if I remember right, looking at the occupation tax and the terms and all that.
Well, the, the sales tax was the best way to pay actually for all four of those things. And with the expansion that we've got going on, supposedly out of the mall, and I don't know, that's kinda died on the vine, and maybe that's gone to hell in a handbasket too. and I don't know, that's kind of died on the mind, and maybe that's gone to hell in a handbasket too. But everything was designed to draw people into the community of Norfolk. And it, it would have been, it wouldn't have been simple, but it would have been a somewhat easy way to get the money that we needed to take care of these things. And, uh, I don't know.
Can't argue with you there, Brett.
Anyways, um, I've talked through my lunch and yours also, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment?
I just want to address the streets for a second. So, we say we don't have enough money for streets, and yet, we give a lot of TIF money away. That's, that's income that could be used for streets. We spent $5.4 million of CHAF and ARPA money on the Johnson Park project. You're going to say, well, it was for the bridge. Well, the bridge was in fair condition, as are most of the bridges in the community. There was nothing about that bridge needed to be replaced. It was also for a roundabout, rerouting storm sewers so it doesn't dump into the pretty kayaking area. Um, $100,000 for a downtown study of ARPA money that could have been used for streets. $300,000 of CHAF money for parking lots that could have been used to fix streets. So the concern is, if we give you more money for streets, there's a lot of folks that don't feel it's going to be spent appropriately based upon past experience. So, if you want more money for streets, and yet, we see how you spend it today, it certainly makes one have serious reservations.
Steve, to cap off, can you talk about how much money we're spending on streets right now and how we've allocated those funds? Because I, I think it's disingenuous to say that, uh, street repair, that we are not seeking to do what we can to devote resources to play catch-up in a lot of the street repair that we need to do. Just with, with the overlay in the concrete repair programs this year.
The concrete, concrete repair programs this year, we're, oh, we're around 1.3 million in concrete repair. Um, and then we have another 1.9 million in mill and overlay that does also include some additional concrete repair, so. You're in that 3.3 million range there for concrete repair, mill and overlay this year, which is a pretty big program for us. Um, again, going forward, we've got our, our, our street, street repair by contract. We've got that up to a million dollars. Um, probably use about half of that on an annual basis for concrete repair. Um, we'll look to carve a little bit of that out on a two- to three-year basis for some mill and overlay, but then also getting on, I think Will's working on a joint seal, uh, RFP so that we can start, start keeping the streets sealed, uh, keep the water out. That's a big, big part of why they, they fail prematurely. Um, and then we have, you know, the council took some action here two, three years ago to advance the Michigan Avenue and Eighth Street projects. Uh, those, that was a phased project, a one- and two-phase project, and, uh, Phase Two kind of got lost. And, and so council rejuvenated that, um, and provided some additional funding. So that's about, that's just shy of $3 million, uh, on that particular project, so. And, and we are working within our budgeting process right now to identify, you know, another 2.5 million a year for the next two years as part of our, our public, public input, street improvements, and engage the public on where they'd like to see some improvements.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.